All right, Madam Mayor, it is 9:02 and we are live.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the July 11th, 2025 pre-agenda meeting of the City of Lake Worth Beach, Florida. Can we have the roll call, please?
Mayor Betty Rush.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sarah Malaga, oh, she's rejoining as a panelist.
President.
Commissioner Christopher McVoy. Okay, he is here, Commissioner Mimi May.
I'm here.
And Commissioner Anthony Segrich.
I'm here, but I got some funny panelist message right in the middle of saying here.
Okay, well, good morning, everyone, and welcome to our little meeting of Friday morning meeting. As this is the agenda meeting, my first question to everyone is, is there someone with a burning desire to talk about a particular thing of the agenda for Tuesday? Well, that's underwhelming. Oh, Anthony, there's your hand up. Mimi, where we go. Let's start with Anthony.
I had a couple of things I wanted to touch upon. I wanted to talk about the item A on the consent agenda, the insurance policy settlement. I wanted to talk about the multi-jurisdictional issues forum, new business A, and then WGI as well as the parking garage. So a couple of things.
Okay, all right.
Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
Lauren Slayden will be joining us. She called me because there's a massive, there's like a car fire and she got stuck in unexpected traffic when she thought she'd be here early. So if you'll see when she joins us, but we couldn't skip her, any of her items until she's on the Zoom, if that's okay.
Okay, um, let's just get a list. Mimi, what's your, what do you want to talk about? And then we'll just go down the list. There might be some overlap.
Sorry, I was muted. No, Anthony kind of covered the couple of things. I do have things, though, and I don't want to, I know that this meeting's short. I do have some things that I have to get approved from you guys at some point during this meeting.
I hope you want to do that, start off with that relatively quickly.
Yeah, no, they're super quick. I just wanted to make sure, but I didn't want to jump ahead.
Let's just do those first, get that out of the way.
Okay, I was on the board meeting yesterday for the hub and August is International Overdose Awareness Month. And they're going to do a an event to honor that, but I also wanted to know if we could on the second August meeting, do a proclamation for overdose awareness month, if people would be okay with doing that, because I believe that that does kind of have to do with Lake Worth Beach.
What say you all?
I'm fine with that.
I support that.
I support that.
Okay, that would, that would be great. The second one.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, Madam Mayor, since Commissioner May started with a proclamation.
Yes.
So it doesn't get lost. I emailed everybody the two potential proclamations for August, and if we could just take care of those really quickly, that'd be great. The first one was for Florida Water Professionals Month, which would be on August 5th. And the second one was Women's Equality Day, which would be on August 19th.
I responded to your email this morning, Melissa. Yes, I support them.
I didn't see it, but she sounds fine. I mean, again, you know, we do a lot of proclamations, but I think that's part of who we are and that we reach out to our public. So I, I'm fine with that.
I'm okay with those two.
I approve.
Okay.
Okay, then I think that that's all I needed for, from you guys for that. So we can go into the agenda. I apologize. Thank you, Anthony.
Madam Mayor, I had a couple of things for, I needed approval, approval as well.
Okay, let's go real quick through these things. Okay, go ahead.
Uh, thank you for indulging me. The first one is I'd like to create a policy on elevating customer service and environmental best practices for our Public Works Department. We've talked about this several times. I don't think it's asking too much to have the recycle bins stacked once they're emptied instead of thrown all over the streets. And I also don't think that it's too much for us to ask to have a additional truck going behind the bulk truck with a broom and dustpan and picking up all the stuff that's left behind. And I think this has to be a policy directive from us as a collaborative. Because as you drive down the streets after these, you know, of course, our service, our people work really hard. But I think that we, as a coastal city, need to be more cognizant of the way we leave our, the debris in the streets. And we really need to, I mean, just elevate our customer service for our residents. So I was trying to get consensus to have a policy conversation on that. As well as a policy conversation on commissioner liaison comments being solely city-related or liaison-related and not so much focused on national and state things that we have no control over. I've heard a lot from residents that they're tired of listening to things that have nothing to do with the city. So I think that we need to revisit that policy. And I was just asking for consensus on both of those.
I can, I can speak to the, I can give consensus on both of those. For the first one, I would like to make sure when we indulge in that conversation that we do have a fiscal, like, what, what would it cost to do that? And is that this, is that something that's specific to a certain area or is it citywide? Or is it, and is that the top priority of what we need to do for that department?
Understood. I mean, stacking of the garbage, the recycle bins is nothing. There's no cost. It's just stacking them instead of throwing them all over the street.
And I don't know if it's the refuge workers that are throwing them all over the street, or if they get kicked or hit or, you know, because some of those streets where they put out the recycling, they're putting them out between cars and cars could be hitting them. I have no idea.
Um, okay, well, I think what we need to do is refer that back to staff to see, to Jamie, to see what impact it would have on staff. But I don't think they're bad. I don't think it's a bad idea.
And liaison comments?
Yeah, I'm not, yeah, talk about liaison comments.
I just, you know, it says commissioner liaison and we all have appointments. And we're supposed to report back on those meetings and things that are happening that affect the city, the residents and the business owners. And I think that we really just, like I said, I've heard a lot of complaints from citizens asking, you know, why, why are you guys talking about things that have nothing to do with the city? So especially when it's at the end of the meeting, people are already exhausted and they're sitting there, you know, trying to get through the meeting and then wanting to hear what's really affecting our, our city. So I just thought we would revisit that policy.
I've always thought that's the way it should be, actually. Anthony?
As far as on the trash and cleanup, I agree. I would like to see maybe them come back as well as possibly considering an additional bulk day. On the commissioner liaison comments, I think that's spot on. We shouldn't be talking about things that we can actually affect. You know, we're there to do a job for the city and for the residents, and I think that's what we should be focused on.
Thank you. Chris?
Yeah. There are many views of what constitutes the business of the city. We are a coastal city. Sea level rise directly affects us and infects our investments. It is a national and a worldwide issue. I would be negligent in my duties if I did not share my information on that as a scientist who has direct knowledge and follows those things. It might not seem like it's directly the city, but it very much relates to us both cost, insurance and other things. Sometimes people on this particular commission seem to forget that we have a duty to represent all residents in our city, residents. And some of the things that I bring up are directly affecting our residents. And I will continue to do that.
Well, I think if we come up with a policy, that may change. You might have to adapt to that policy.
And I will make sure that our residents are aware of this continued approach that is a head in the sand and is derelict in duty of looking out and protecting the health, safety and welfare of all our residents.
Well, once again, you've chosen to express that you are the person on the commission that takes the higher ground, which again, I think is a little insulting to the rest of us. I think what we're talking about is direct effects. We have, we're on a committee, we have our things that we need to come forward with. So I, for you to couch it in that way, Chris, is really insulting.
It might be, but I get a very frequent statement, how come I'm the only, you're the only commissioner elected official that we see here? I get that a lot. So I know that I am representing people. I don't do it for the higher ground.
Do you say that? Who's saying that to you? Because I'm everywhere. We're everywhere. Every one of us goes to everything in this city.
That we're invited to. What? I said that we are invited to many things that he attends. I don't think any of us.
We don't even know about.
We don't even get, we don't even get an invitation for it.
So I, I do, I do agree with the idea of keeping it to a city-focused state and I, I agree. So Mr. Segrich?
I would just, just say, no, no one is saying that you can't speak on these topics. It's for the good of the meeting and the flow of the city commission meeting. I speak with my residents all the time about topics that we don't discuss at the city commission meeting. You can hold coffee with a commissioner, you can hold town halls, you can hold symposiums. There's nothing stopping you from doing that. It's really for the good of the meeting and allowing the meeting to finish in a timely fashion so we can get to the business of the city. And it's not fair to other commissioners that don't necessarily get to their city business when we get gummed up on national topics and so on. So you know, there's plenty of other outlets. No one's silencing anyone.
Right.
Oh, yes, they are.
Well, all right, let's, not at the, not at the city commission, and I think it is a city. It's, Anthony is correct. You can go, there's all kinds of places to voice our opinions, personal. I do not, I have personal opinions about things, which I think it would be fun to be able to say, hey, I think this, but my job, my role as a city elected official is to focus on the immediate well-being of the residents and protect the residents of our city. So I don't, you know, to get worldview stuff is frankly, sometimes time-consuming and counterproductive to what we're trying to do, which is run our little city. So does someone want to write a policy and see if we can get it?
Maybe Melissa, what other cities' policies are in regard?
Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
Um, while this was being discussed, I thought that there could be, I, obviously I would defer to our city attorney, Elizabeth. But I was thinking maybe there would be, we could just add something to the rules and procedure resolution.
Right. That's where it would go.
Right. So we could just add language to that regarding commissioner liaison reports and comments that they're only city-related issues and topics.
Yeah, I really, you know, although it's, it's hard, because, you know, this is a rough time in the world, but I think keeping our personal political agendas.
It has nothing to do with personal political agendas. It has to do with protecting the health, safety and welfare of all of our residents. And that is city business and that is my responsibility that I swore to do. And I will decide what is city business. I will not accept a decision that says only how much money we're going to spend on painting fire hydrants yellow is city business.
And I don't think. Mr. Segrich?
Just a point of order, you know, we have our hands raised for a reason. Mr. McVoy, you seem to be ignorant of that kind of policy and procedure. You know, it's not fair to the rest of us that we sit here, we raise our hand, we wait to be recognized and then we speak. I would, I would ask you to maintain that level of decorum. I would also ask that when you're out in public meetings with other officials, you don't interact with them and violate sunshine law like we had on Monday. So there, there's, there's things that you do that continue to disrupt the flow of our meetings. And I'm just asking you politely to maintain decorum, raise your hand like the rest of us, get recognized, say your piece and be done with it. So we can have an effective meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I don't know what you're talking about Monday. Monday was what? Anthony? You're muted.
There was a public, there was a public meeting where there were complaints that there were multiple elected officials speaking and asking questions and interacting at a.
That's incorrect. I was there. That's incorrect. I was there. Chris was there. And I checked with our city attorney before I attended any of the meetings. I knew there was, because I think that each one, I'm going to as many of those presentations as I can, because one of the things I'm there for is to hear what the reaction of the citizens, you know, to see their reaction, to hear their questions. So and as long as we don't interface with each other, ask a question, answer a question, it's not a sunshine law violation. It's okay. And I'm, I very, I asked one very practical question, but then I'm there to like listen and keep my mouth shut. So that's, and I will continue to go to those meetings. And it's just being in the same room doesn't mean it's a sunshine violation. So I was in the room with Mr. McVoy and the next night or the day later was with, with Sarah, with Miss Malaga. So I don't, that's not a problem, actually, as long as we don't talk to each other. And I think it's frankly, I, people, the reaction that I've had from the two meetings that I've shown up is people are happy to see us there to hear what they have to say. So anyway, all right. But no, I think that we, we, I think keeping it to the city business is is important. So. Okay, what's up next?
Wait, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor. So are we bringing a discussion back or are we going to bring back the rules of procedure resolution with, with that in there for discussion at that time?
To me, that makes the most sense, but what about you guys?
I agree. That makes sense to have, bring it back in the, in the language and then have a conversation and a vote.
Right. Anthony?
I would agree, bring back the language and the vote.
Okay.
And Madam Mayor, just in case you didn't, didn't see Lauren Slayden.
Lauren is here.
Yeah, she is here.
Okay, all right, moving right on, consent A, consent A, which is, Anthony, you brought it up. Let's see what we're talking about.
I just had a, just a quick question for city staff. Is there any negative financial impact of the city entering into this settlement?
Consent A? Standard insurance.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the, not consent A, C. Is, is what I wanted to talk about.
I'm sorry, is that, I'm sorry, I, I came running in, there was a, there was a fire on 95, so I came scrambling in real quick.
Well, good morning, Lauren, and thank you for joining us.
Good morning. I apologize, guys. Is that the settlement agreement?
Yes, settlement agreement.
No, actually, it's a positive for the city because to, for the city, for each employee, if they're in the general, the general employee's pension plan, we contribute, we contribute 22.18% currently into that pension plan per employee. So switching the clerk into the 401A, we put in 10%, so it's actually a positive financial impact for the city.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anthony, your next one was new business A, appointment and member of the countywide multi-jur, now I know that Mimi is interested in, I've, I, she expressed, I think, interest in this appointment. And what was your comment, Anthony?
I was also interested in that as well.
Okay. All right. And then.
And we're gonna need, we're gonna need a, an alternate, a.
Yeah, there's gotta be an alternate.
And so we'll see what happens. We can vote.
We can vote. And the next appointment, member, alternate, intergovernmental planment, park, Jamie?
That's the Jamie and William one.
Right, they, they go to that, which is good. Okay. And the next one you said was, oh, what was that? I can't read it.
Garage.
Garage, the garage conversation. Okay.
WGI was the next one.
Yeah, WGI, that was it. I can't read my own writing. So what, talk about that.
So my, my concern with it is, you know, the, in the background and justification, it's saying that, you know, there's, due to the study, there, you know, we have a inadequate supply of parking. And that implementing this plan or proposed paid parking plan would promote sustainable alternatives and reduce parking demands. I'm not sure right now we have sustainable alternatives or an alternative to the downtown parking. And I'm very concerned about the health of the businesses downtown. I think implementing this plan now might be premature until we, we have an alternative. And I would just, my personal, you know, thoughts are that, that we kind of postpone this task order until we actually have alternatives.
Okay, I mean, okay, well, Mimi, Jamie, oh, let's go, let's go to Jamie first. I always like to hear from Jamie first.
Uh, just a clarification, because you guys said the garage item, but then we're, I believe we're talking about the WGI task order for the paid parking. So are we talking about the garage or the paid parking?
Paid parking, the WG, I don't think it's time to put paid parking in by any means.
No, but the, the WGI task order is for, to start a process, to put a program together for the paid parking. That is not for the garage. So I just want to make sure we're talking about the right item here.
Well, I don't, I mean, are we planning on, you know, I mean, paid parking is one of the hot topics that we're dealing with. And I'm wondering, before we have a parking garage, would we, are we planning on starting that prior to the parking garage?
Well, well, again, so you have unfinished business B, which is the parking structure, the actual garage that we're talking about. But then you have new business, item F, which is the task order for WGI for the paid parking. So those are two completely separate items. So are we talking about the task order for the, to, to start the process of putting together a paid parking program or are we talking about the garage?
I was talking about the task. The first thing, the first.
Okay, so the task order for WGI, then, so this is just, this is the first step. We have to put an entire program together that we would then have to come and present to all of you guys as we're going through that process and kind of developing what this would look like. What the limits would be as far as, as far north of Lasserne, south of Lake, set the parameter for what the actual residential de-cap program would be. This whole thing needs to be put together. And, and kind of keeping you guys in the loop as everything moves along. So it's going to take a while to develop all this. So it's nothing that would be going into place anytime soon here. We had to put all that together first. So all this is, is just allowing us to start that process.
Anthony, what's your reaction to that? Mimi, what's your, what's, Mimi, you got your hand up.
Thank you. I, I kind of understood it in the same way that city manager Brown just kind of said it. It looks to me like we're not in, I mean, we're not going to be doing anything anytime soon, but we have to do the planning, the pre-planning. You know, I mean, we can't wait until we erect the garage and then be like, oh, maybe we should plan this. But I do have a question about it, Mr. Brown. The cost is 103,000 roughly. Is that for all three of those phases? Will that be the entire thing going from all three phases? Is that all included in the work order 19?
Uh, that is correct. And Tiana, I know Tiana's on, Tiana, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm pulling it right now. But I believe all of those tasks are all included in that 103, because I know we had to have that modified.
Good morning.
For the first one. Hey.
Good morning. Good morning. Yes, that, that is correct. It is included. It does list all of the tasks for that, for that rate.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The other thing is I, I read through it, but I didn't read through it completely. So Tiana, maybe you can help. When it talks about the things, is it going to talk about the, the pricing for the parking garage too? Are we going to include that?
Which is, this is still for the, the task order?
Yes.
No, no, keep in mind, these are two separate topics.
I understand that, but if we are having a parking program when we have a parking garage, I'm assuming the parking garage is going to be part of the parking program. But if we put in the parking program previous to the parking garage, this is a lot of peace. Then then it may be a little premature, and I think that might be what Mr. Segrich was alluding to.
The only thing, the only comment I have about this, and however it goes, let's make the decision, but everything works at such a glacial pace that when we start something and we think, well, you know, I, like, it's, we just had the raft race. Can you believe it was a year since we had the last raft race? The, the calendar goes fast and our processes are quite slow. So I think, you know, I agree with Mimi that it's a good idea to sort of get started. We're not going to do anything. We're not going to implement anything. It just gives maybe a chance to sort of explore at a reasonable pace what the options are. Is that what you're kind of talking about, Mimi?
No, I mean, I, I, I think that there's no point in doing something if we're not going to use the, the end product, you know. So my question was, you know, are we looking at the paid parking program around the entire city and are we including the garage as an alternative option? That's all I was asking. Are we gonna, we're talking about the parking policy, we should have the parking garage involved in it.
It would have to be included, of course, yeah.
That's what I'm asking, though. I don't know if it will.
Jamie, would it include the parking garage concept?
To, to some aspect. And again, we would get into all this as part of that, that whole program. And keep in mind, WGI are the ones who did the, the layout for the garage as well. As far as setting that initial phase. So it's the same company.
Right. And then would it also include parking at, like what we were talking about with the overnight parking on streets and the parking that we have somehow allocated to private residences? All of that would be included in this?
That is correct, because we're going to be looking at the entire downtown corridor, city parking lots as far as city hall and how that gets used after hours, hatch parking lot, how that's used after hours. So it's going to incorporate everything in that whole corridor.
Okay.
We talked about before also the phased approach, because we obviously only have a certain number of staff right now. So we obviously wouldn't be doing the whole city right off the bat. I know initially in discussions, I know William, his desire was to go from Sixth Avenue South all the way to Seventh Avenue North. Not sure we can do all that at the first stretch either. It might just be, you know, three or four blocks north of Lake, three or four, or south of Lake, three or four north of Lasserne. So we have to kind of, as this process, kind of lay out what this grid is going to look like and then make sure it's scalable, if that's something we want to do in the future. But we have to lay down the foundation first.
Sure, and it might make sense even to start the permitted parking before any paid parking. So, you know, who knows how this is going to go, but I think that that asking this, I mean, one of the things in the three task orders is community involvement. And I think that's, that's the important part too, because people know their streets like no, no one else knows.
Yeah.
We need to hear from them. So, all right, I'm done. There's.
Employee parking, you know, there, there are a lot of different aspects to this whole thing. So it's just a matter of starting the process.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you. I feel a little bit like we're putting the cart before the horse and I'll explain what I think the cart or the horse is. I think there are two pieces that we do not have that we should have before we spend money, public money on something like this. First, I think we need not public participation, but simply to know how do residents of the city overall feel about the idea of paid parking? Are they in favor of that and are they not? Similarly, I would include in that, how do businesses feel about paid parking or not? That ought to come in before we go that direction and spend money investigating a plan that maybe nobody wants. And to inform, so part two, to inform the businesses, I think it would be very prudent, fiscally prudent, to have some sort of resource economist type approach that said, what is the cost to our city and businesses to put in paid parking? Given that we are one of the few communities around here who has had traditionally free parking and most other places don't. Um, we speculate that this will not have any influence, that nobody will choose to go to West Palm over Lake Worth because we now have paid parking. That's speculation, not data. And I've heard any number of people, so it's anecdotal, but I've heard it. People saying, you do paid parking, I'm not coming. And I think that's a plausible hypothesis. It's only a hypothesis until somebody does some actual data on it. And that would be prudent to do before we spend $100,000 on how to make such a program, my opinion.
Thank you. Mr. Segrich and then Mimi?
Uh, just real, real quick, Jamie, this, this sparked my memory. Do we have a date where the ordinance? Um, do we have a date where the um ordinance change for the overnight parking, given specific times, is coming here for us?
Uh, we are in the seat of that uh draft. I got back from Elizabeth earlier on this week. Um, so we're, that was on that love list. I, you probably haven't seen it yet. I sent an email last night to all of you. That kind of listed out a lot of uh different things we're currently working on. But uh, we do have that draft up together, so we're working on that right now. But no, there's not a certain date. I would like to have it on, if possible, that. First meeting in August. I just got to go through, I haven't had a chance to get to Elizabeth's stuff yet, so. If not the first meeting, I'd have it on the second.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
All right, uh, Mimi?
Uh, just going back to some of the comments from uh Mr. McFoy, the. I think that part of this process is asking all of those questions, but I don't think you can just walk up to someone and be like, hey, do you want to pay for parking? Because nobody's, yes. So I, I understand that, and I don't know that um. I, I, I don't want to, I, it's not a matter of, are you paying or are you not paying? You know, I mean, remember, we talked about there being different times for paid parking. We talked about there being um different, what was the word that they used? Dynamic parking. We talked about, you know, maybe on the street is paid and in the garage is free for a little while. I, I, I don't know, but I think that that's what this whole, this whole thing would be. Would be to look at these possibilities. I think it's, it would be um. A waste of exercise to come to the public without some sort of presentation and some sort of ideas and some sort of concept of what we're looking for. Now and in the future. I do agree with Mr. Sagrich, right now. As of our, way our downtown is right now, I agree with you. I don't think people are going to pay to park. Um, but I think that if we're looking at the future at, with some of the changes that are coming. I think it's going to be prudent that we do look into a policy like this and that we have data, just like you said. That gives us the opportunity to make smart decisions based on data. But we can't make those decisions unless we go forward with something like this, where we're going to get all of that information.
Right, and um, yeah, nobody's going to say I want to pay for parking. But I also know that people say, ah, I'm going to move out of Lake Worth if that happens, and, and they don't. Um, and we're also, you know, we're one, I don't know who else has free parking, but you know, financially, it's lovely that we do it, but it's like. Financially stressed people giving away things that other people are charging for. And maybe that's, you know, what we're at, you know, I'm sitting looking at my budget book and I'm looking for that income, I'm looking for that revenue, and the expenditures, and it's very. Tight, so I think we owe it as, as fiscally responsible to our citizens. To, to investigate this, and also, we, every time we've talked about this. We have said there will be some, we, whatever it is, like Mimi, we don't know what it was, but there will be accommodations for our, our. Real, like, you know, for residents, like a parking permit or something, so. And I've been told by staff that that's doable, that you can have, the way they do it now with the computer, it's either resident rate or. You know, outside rate, so there are things that can be um modified for. Mr. McFoy?
Um, thank you. Uh, the reason I use the word resource economist type study. Was, obviously, it is well-known when you do surveys. That you don't ask a question, do you like free beer? Because that's not a useful way to get accurate information. Resource economists. Study this sort of stuff, and it's a particularly interesting part of economics. Because it's not so easy to do that, but they've been doing it for decades and have worked out ways to accurately find out. What? And, and they even have measures of how accurately, sort of like Gallup polls, um. So the idea that we simply should proceed forward with a hundred thousand dollars without first. Getting that information, is this something that would have an economic negative or positive? Without having that, and without asking both residents and the visitors, much of our downtown is supported by non-residents. I think it would be prudent to find out. You know, how would, and of course, you can ask it in a nuanced way. Well, what if it was this kind of parking, or what if it was that kind of parking? Those are all very doable things, but it would be prudent to find that out before you. Decide to go down this course and spend a hundred thousand dollars on it.
I have, I mean, I've been downtown, we're in the parking lot behind my building. I've had people with their credit cards out looking for like, where do we pay? And like, it's free. They're quite shocked, so, um, and I think that, you know, the WGI, that's something that they'll, they'll be taking a look at, so.
Not if it isn't in the contract.
All right, and, and maybe, you know, you have an opinion. Yeah, that's, that's, that's an opinion, and I, I, this, so that would be paying for another study before we pay for the. Study that we're talking about now. Anyway, um, so, and what about anything else on the agenda that people want to talk about? Uh, Anthony?
Uh, I wanted to discuss the, the parking garage structure. Um. So we, we, we got a draft of, of the design. Um, thank you, staff. Um. Very, very complete. Um, looking good, but um, I believe there were some issues to do with um fire. And potentially having to reduce the number of spaces, and I was just wondering if, if Jamie, you, you could talk about that?
First, the street, the street.
Yeah, we're, we're currently working through that now. We'll have more information. Um, we're getting the presentation together. I was speaking with uh Brent earlier this morning. Um, and uh, we'll have the PowerPoint and all that other stuff ready to go for Tuesday, so we can kind of go into ends and outs. Um, budget issues we're seeing, um, you know, obviously uh. There, there are many factors uh outside of our city, um, affecting um material costs and, and stuff like that right now. Um, so we'll kind of go into some budget things and bring some stuff forward. Again, on, on Tuesday, this is um nothing where you guys are going to be making a decision on Tuesday. Um, I do have uh one-on-ones set up with all of you uh the week of the twenty-eighth. I will have William and Joan and Brent Woodfield joining our one-on-ones, at least for the first portion. Even one-on-ones to kind of go into the whole garage discussion, so we can start getting more information from each of you guys individually. Um, as far as what you uh, what you feel on uh what you're going to hear next Tuesday. In some ways forward, and then we'll be coming back to you on August nineteenth. So, that's what we currently.
So we're going to, are we going to have one-on-ones before the meeting on Tuesday? About this specific thing?
No, because Tuesday, we're going to be presenting everything to you guys.
Right, oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, yeah, so, so you guys will be able to, to get all the information on Tuesday, see the presentation and everything. You'll have a couple weeks here from your constituents. Um, uh, you guys, or a majority of you are going to the uh, the Electric uh Conference. Um, so we couldn't do it week after the meeting, so we have to do it the week after that one, which is the week of the twenty-eighth, so. But we still have a lot of time to speak with uh your constituents and everything, and kind of get a, get an idea or get a feel for things, um, before you.
And that, what we sent out is just a, a concept at this point of the design.
That is correct, and that is just the, the very start.
I just want to point that out.
Yes, and we can get, we'll go into like the, the budget and finance and all the other stuff we're kind of grappling with right now too, um, at that meeting.
Some value engineering going on there, Mr. Mr. Brown?
You love that word, Madam Mayor.
I do love that word. I do love that, because that's what every public project, every project I've ever worked on. You get to the point, and you're like, okay, here we are now, what can we do?
Welcome to government.
Love the government. La, Mimi?
Actually, Sarah was before me.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, Sarah, I didn't see your hand up.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to, because we're talking about this, ask, um, I had sent an email to Jamie Troy. And Jared yesterday requesting a legislative update be added to the count, to this agenda. So we can talk about the appropriations and so all the residents know what's going on. So we're sitting here talking about budget, and I, I just want to make sure that everyone in the city is aware that we are getting some funds from the state.
I don't think, we don't have it, it's not on the agenda, right, to do that?
No, I was, I asked Jamie and Troy if they had it, if they were already planning on doing it, and I hadn't gotten a response yet.
Okay, yeah, um. We've all gotten some emails from different groups about the legislative updates, not just our people, but it's interesting to, to read as they come up. Okay, um. Anything else? Sarah's hand is still up, so I just want to make sure. I don't want, okay, there we go. Mimi?
Okay, um, going back to the parking garage, if. Um, and this, is Annie on here, or is there somebody from building and planning and official?
Yeah, come on, yes.
Okay, hi, um, question. I'm looking at the ordinance to change the zoning regarding the parking garage area. And my question is, if we choose to um. Make that entire site a parking garage without any other buildings on it. Do we still have to make those zoning changes?
We would still want to be making the zoning changes because of the um. Additional things like lot coverage that we get through the DT zoning district rather than the MUE zoning district. Um, the DT zoning district is still aligned with the garage.
That would increase the lot co, the lot coverage availability?
Correct.
Okay, and then um. Actually, I think that does answer that question for me. Thanks, Annie, I appreciate it.
No problem.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any other agenda items you want to talk about? Kind of a quiet meeting today. Um, staff, do you have anything you'd like to bring up?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I did want to mention one thing. I, I did uh send an email out to you guys uh last night. You. May or may not have seen it yet, but I did want to just remind everyone that um, we do have some survey work going on out on the beach today related to that ten feet. And the, the whole town thing, so if you see anything posted on social media or get any phone. No one's driving trucks down the beach. It's just part of our process and our due diligence, uh, as we kind of uh. Continue putting all the, the pieces together here. Um, and uh hopefully in late summer, we'll be coming back to you guys with an update uh prior to engaging um the town again in those conversations.
So we're constantly working on that issue, it's just we don't.
Great, and this is the, the Dune Restoration slash Beach Enrichment, the stuff that came up last year, so, yes, that is still ongoing. So just want to let everyone know that is happening on the beach today, though.
Thank you, and I just want to share, um, Jamie, you know, on our one-on-one, what Jamie's going to do, you know, we throw a lot at staff, you know, turf and.
It was done last night, Madam Mayor, by the way.
You did a lot, you, you made the list?
It's part of that same email.
Okay, great, um, thank you for doing that, because I, it absolutely makes sense for us to have to say. You know, here's a list, where do we start the list, priorities, so I asked, are we going to discuss that on Tuesday, or how are we going to do that?
Uh, yeah, I, more than anything, I just wanted to kind of get it out to you guys, and obviously there's stuff on there that didn't, I didn't include, such as like, uh, you know, there's a lot of still motive stuff going on. There's all these other things. We still have our, our daily departmental operational stuff, which keep everyone extremely busy as well. This is just some of the, the high points that I, that I put in that email. Um, but I just want to make sure that. When all this stuff is coming forward and we have different ordinances we're working on and, and everything, um, and we have Elizabeth and Christie and all, all of our attorneys working on these different things. That if something comes up at a meeting and we say, okay, we need to work on an ordinance, like even beginning of this meeting. We brought up, you know, modifying, you know, our, our rules to say that we need to kind of stick with topics that relate to just the city of Lake Worth Beach. Well, at the next meeting, you might be like, well, well, where's that one at?
Right.
When, when, when's that going to come back? Um, well, if you see this list that I threw out last night, um. Where does that fall within there? Because we can't say, hey, Elizabeth, work on all these right now at the same time and bring them to the same meeting. Um, it just takes some time, so it's just a matter of kind of just managing priorities, um, and making sure that. You guys don't have the, the misconception that something is coming to a meeting. Or continue to say, hey, when's this coming, when's this coming, when's this coming? If we can kind of lay those out a little bit, so we know from a staff perspective, what is most important to all of you collectively? So we can kind of set that priority list, and that way you guys know, okay, yeah, this has been talked about. It's coming, it probably won't be until September, though, because we have a lot more important stuff that needs to come in front of that, so.
Well, yeah, because our, part of our conversation was, you know, some of our frustration as elected officials and as citizens is, hey, what's going on with that? So I'm, you know, I've asked for a little more communication about status of stuff, just so that we know what's happening. Because, you know, with the beach thing, I'm like, what's going on, what's going on? And you're like, well, here's what's going on, and here's what the timeframe is, and this is what we all agreed to. So I had to like take a deep, take a deep breath and step back. But um, but it is important, because we don't, we don't know, you, you know, staff gets the phone calls, the emails, and you know what's going on, you're having meetings and stuff, and we, we don't know any of that, so. On our one-on-ones, if we could get a little more. Updates on that. I think our frustration would be. I, I know I would, and I have to, I was very cranky that night, and I have to apologize to everybody that I was cranky at the meeting, because I was, I was. Um, but it was really out of this sort of frustration of time. So um, I was, I was educated by our city manager after that meeting, and um, I, I promise not to be as cranky. But um. But that, that's helpful, you know, for us to know what's going on, um, and we very much appreciate that. And I think it's going to be helpful for us to have this list of items, because we don't realize how big that list is. And how one thing might seem inconsequential, but it takes just as much time to amend an ordinance on a small thing as it does a big thing oftentimes, so. I think, but for us to have that list and kind of an expectation of time is helpful. The other thing I'm looking at, I was just looking at our little pamphlet of our um. Strategic planning, you know, that's the other kind of thing I like, where are we with our strategic, you know? I think that's like for us to help figure out. So um, so I appreciate that, that, I think that'd be helpful for everybody. Um, Chris was next, and then Mr. Sagrich.
Um, why doesn't Mr. Sagrich go ahead, although I very quickly will.
You just, we, we got twenty minutes, let's use our time wise.
Um, I did see the list last night from Jamie. I must admit, that was a very long list. It took me a little while to figure out that that is just the list, I think, Jamie can clarify. Of things that have a legal component that our legal office is somehow dealing with. Is that correct?
That is correct. That is only what legal is currently dealing with. If I was going to add all of the staff directives and things you guys have asked staff to do.
I think you should, so that we know what we're doing.
That'd be about four times longer, so it just, it's, it's just a matter of kind of making sure everyone understands that there is a lot going on right now. But we still only have the same amount of bodies, so I just want to make sure that, yeah.
We're about to start budgeting.
But that's correct, Commissioner, it is, that was just a list from legal, yes.
Well, I appreciated the list. I, I think I would echo um not to add more stuff to your list, but I would echo the mayor's request. That probably all of us would, would welcome is. Just having a list somewhere, a spreadsheet or something that we can look at, what all is sort of on the hopper. Might not be a bad idea, because it, it, I, I remembered some of the things on there, but, but there was a lot. Anyhow. Um, thank you for doing the list, and, and I hope we can maybe add more. Um, I did want to speak to, to something that is not on the agenda, but um. Is very much, and I will, you will hear why, um, city business. My mother's birthday was yesterday. She spent age ten to age fourteen in a country that was occupied by Nazi Germany. Yesterday, I was in front of the. Collier-Dade Airport entrance, um, watching. A steady stream of heavy trucks go in and out of that. And I did, along with uh Director of Friends of the Everglades, interviews with ABC News out of Tampa. Luis Agari out of um Miami, Local Ten. And with ARD, a German national radio uh program. I did that as a three decades-long environmental and Everglades expert. About the environmental effects. And the lack of. Um, ANIPA process, the Environmental Protection Act process that is required for federal processes. Such as building a detention center. Um, I did it in that capacity. At the same time, I was very aware that we have a large population in our city that is extremely fearful, extremely worried right now. And I've wondered at what point do these two hats that I wear intersect? I don't know whether it's significant that it happened on my mother's birthday, but on the drive back, I got the call. A woman who lives in Lake Worth, her husband is now in that facility that I was standing outside of. That is a direct connection to our city business. And our protection of the welfare, health, and well-being of our quarter of our residents. And I only ask, as did the rabbi from Naples. That we have room in our hearts to think about justice, to think about what is happening to a portion of our population. And to think about whether it is happening in a legal way, whether due process is provided. Whether those detained out in the mosquitoes and the heat that I was standing in. Are in fact being given what they have a legal right to, the ability to have confidential calls with their family, with their. are in fact being given what they have a legal right to, the ability to have confidential calls with their family, with their attorneys. An attorney that has clients there also was interviewed by A R D, the German radio, and said that her clients, she has not been able to reach them. They have not been able to have confidential calls. This does relate to our city. It may not relate to everybody, but we have a duty to represent health, safety and protection of all of our residents. Thank you.
And I think as private citizens, we can do whatever we want. Mr. Segred?
Um.
But not as elected officials.
Thank, thank you very much, Jamie, for, for, for getting that list. Um, I, I too would like to echo, I, it would be nice to see staff directives on that. Um, understanding that this list is, is very large and we have a limited number of, of staff, um it, it might be prudent for, for us to consider in the budgeting process, some sort of outsourcing or increasing um throughput for staff. Um, and see if we can't find some dollars from some places and, and spend them on, on some of this work. The, I, I really believe this work is extraordinarily important um to, to keep moving through the process. And if, if there are ways that we as a commission can reallocate budgets and, and help alleviate the pressure valve on this, um, I would like us as a commission to, to explore that. And I think, you know, we've got a number of, of things coming down the pipeline where as a commission, we're gonna be voting on some things where we're, we're gonna be choosing to expend a lot of uh city resources. And maybe we could utilize those resources towards helping relieve this pressure valve on, on staff to get through some of this stuff so that we can get these things accomplished in um, a more timely manner. Um, understand that staff's working as hard as they can on it. Um and then um yeah, that, that, that was it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything to say? Or opine on? Well, anything from, Yannick, thank you very much. I just, I'm, I'm slogging through the budget book. Uh, I would make one, I would make one request. Next year, when you do this, if you can not use pale gray, thin lettering. I'm like, this would be so much easier if I could just read it. Um, that's my only request.
This is the first year we are, we're using the software.
Hmm.
Um, so I'm not sure if we change the color, but I'll try.
Just, it's font, just the print, not the, anything else. Um, and that's, is that posted, is that book posted on the website?
It should be.
Okay, good. Because I want, you know, people to talk about what we, the city should, the city should. But if they actually take the time like we have to take and sit and look through that book and see where these extra dollars for things are gonna come from, it's a, it's a talent. Mimi? I see your hands up.
Thank you. Um, next week for our one-on-ones, uh, uh, Jamie, are, are we gonna have finance in there?
Are you gonna, you said, are you gonna finance in there?
Yeah, because if we have questions about the budget.
Yeah, yeah, we can.
Okay.
Yeah.
I would.
You guys all like to have, uh, like the first part of that meeting or something? Do you have budget, direct budget questions? You, you, you're saying leading into the twenty-first first budget workshop, correct, or?
Yeah, I mean, unless the first budget workshop, they're gonna present and then we come with questions afterwards. But I mean, I'm sure if we're reading through the book, which we are, I am, I have questions already. You know what I mean? Like just clarifying questions, not, not you know, anything that we would vote on, just understanding the actual document.
Yeah, so that budget workshop uh on the twenty-first, that's actually, that's the all-day workshop.
Right.
So hopefully, all those questions we come forward, we'll be answering them as you guys are asking them during that whole process. But if you guys would like to meet on things before the budget workshop, we can do that as well.
I, I don't know. What, what do you guys think?
Well, if we're looking, if you have specific, you can always call Yannick and ask him or emailing with questions if you have them. I, I don't think there's any problem with having um, somebody there if you want, in your one-on-one. That's up to you guys.
Yeah, if you guys should, just, just reach out to me if you would like to have uh finance in your meetings next week, like ahead of, if you wanna meet with them ahead of the budget workshop. Um, just let me know. We'll schedule it.
Thank you.
Jamie, if you could, um, I'm sorry.
No.
Uh, Jamie, if you could send us like the um, um the scheduling, the schedule of, of your meetings, so we can just make sure we're available.
Yep.
Have any questions?
Okay.
Okay. Is that it, Mimi?
Yep.
Okay, uh, Anthony, we are, we're one minute. You got one, you got two minutes.
Just Kyle, she wanted to say hi before she has her puppies.
Oh, my God, I can't wait for her puppies. Look.
Today or tomorrow?
Is this a real, is this her first litter?
Yeah.
Oh, God. Honey, good luck. But birthing, if you're gonna be there, birthing puppies is really, it's a little scary cuz, but they know what to do. They absolutely know what to do. It's really amazing. So good luck. Three puppy, how many puppies?
Three. Three in the whip.
Madam Mayor, if I could, a very brief one relating to the
Yes, I'm about to call on you. I'm just finishing up with Mr. Segred and then I was gonna call on you, Christopher. Yes, Christopher.
Thank you. Um, I just, I think all of us have, have or will shortly receive the um, internal auditor's report on building permit process. Uh, I have met with him. I have gone through, I haven't gone through all of the report yet, but I've gone through a lot of it. I have to say, it is a very impressive piece of work. I think he has done an excellent job of working with staff to figure out where are the holdups to try and um, in, in the process, something that has concerned people for a long time, many you know, widely ranging in the city. I think he's identified very specific results and very specific action steps. I hope very much that we will, as a commission, encourage and ask for quantitative milestones of are, uh, you know, are we carrying this out? Are we, are we going to make the changes? Cuz um uh, uh, my sense was it, it, it fits with a lot of what I hear from residents of concerns. And it uh seems to have very thought-out best practice approaches to how to improve it.
Yeah, I've also met with him and I've, I've mentioned this to Jamie cuz I think it's something that we all are interested in improving. Um, I think part of the budget process is gonna be part of that because I think it, it will in by, by nature is gonna ask for another staffer to. Mr. Brown? But I agree with you. It was wonderful. It was hard work and I really impressed.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I was gonna be getting with the, the clerk today cuz need to identify some um possible uh workshop dates for August. Uh, we still need to have the PBSO priorities um that got pulled off of that uh last one. And I was gonna recommend that we actually look at um some of the recommendations and just have this as an item on that workshop to have that conversation. Um, cuz there, as, as Commissioner McFoy mentioned, there are some definite things in there that I think we should be looking into.
Oh, no, it was a great.
But I think that, that's definitely a workshop item we could, we could add to that.
And what I thought was impressive about it was he um involved staff. It wasn't somebody coming in and going, this is what we need to do. It came from staff. So, no, I, I totally agree and I think we need to address it at some point. Everybody, please get to, to staff the dates that you're not available. Because there's so many meetings and stuff that they have to schedule about ten people to come to each one. So please be kind and, and give them their notice. A notice of unavailability is what we do in court. And just here's the dates I'm not available because otherwise for Melissa and everybody to run around, is that day good? Is that day good? It'd be helpful for them.
Just the calendar, Madam Mayor. All we need to do is make sure you guys just put on your calendar if you're on vacation, if you're not around. Cuz that's the first thing that we go to is your calendars. So.
Okay. Yes, and some of us tried to get away for a couple days. And then there's the Florida League of Cities in August and the F M E A in another week or so. So, yeah. All right. Um, it's been fun. Uh, we have a quiet weekend ahead of us, I think. No, no giant festivities. Um have a wonderful weekend, everybody, and uh see you all on Tuesday.